We've already done the pledge and moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. Ermitt?
Here.
Perry?
Here.
Ms. Rado?
Here.
Seddon?
Here.
Shishney?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Under adoptions or deletions from the work session agenda, we deleted number seven. We moved that to the voting session. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. McGinley? It's all possible.
I can't...who was that? Mr. Haas, you weren't clear. Please come through again.
Yes, sir. Can we have a discussion to start meeting in public again?
Sure. We'll put that down, number seven.
It should be very brief. And again, with caveat that obviously people...some people will not be able to with health restrictions. But nonetheless, I think we should move in that direction.
We'll put that down, number seven, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
I have a couple deletions off the agenda, please. I would like to delete item...I'd like to delete item two and three and four. And five, actually. Due to the fact that the county council has not had ample supply time to even probably comprehend half of it. That one document's almost 300 and some pages. First of all, the second issue that I have is our bylaws clearly says that legislation should go to the committee first. This kind of legislation is pretty voluminous, and I think it behooves us to put this through to the committee first and let the committee vet it and ask questions and do all the things that they need to do before council gets a chance to weigh in with that. But I mean, there's some pretty substantial things in these documents that I think council should have a little bit more time than just a discussion regarding an ordinance. I have some serious concerns about ordinances coming from the manager. He is not the 12th member of council, and I understand this is a work session, we're just discussing. But ordinances come from members of council. He can suggest...no question he could suggest.
Man, you're...
But I think these need to come off the agenda. I don't think...I have not had time.
Well, I think you made a point on that. I think you would like those removed. Anybody else would like to comment about two, three, four, and five?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. This is Jim Weber.
Who's that?
Jim Weber from Zoning.
Yeah, we're not there, Mr. Weber, yet. This is council first.
I had a comment. I had a comment on number five.
I know that. Hold on one, if you would, for a second, please, Mr. Weber. Thank you. Other members of council?
This is us, Steve. I would agree with Councilmember Griffith that they should come off. There's a lot of information there that we have to digest.
Okay. Anybody else? I would like to just talk about it a little bit, if I may. As you see, they're all discussions. If we discuss it and find out that we need more information, we certainly don't have to move this forward. We can have it come back, do a work session if we wish, or whatever route we decide. I think it's necessary that we bring these items up. It's necessary that council sees them. It's necessary for council to discuss them. And if there's other information or whatever that's necessary for council members, we can get that, and we can wait until the information is available. Do not take any action until we have the answers that we would wish to have or information that we would wish to have. Anybody else?
Mr. McGinley, to that point...I'm sorry, somebody else?
Other people first.
Sure, absolutely.
If anybody else has a comment, they have the priority, then certainly you may chime in again.
I was just going to recommend to have Mr. Weber speak to timelines and be able to articulate to council at least some of the necessities here.
Yeah, Jim, this is Matt Jones.
I want other council members to comment first. Anyone else in council?
This is Leanne. I was just going to ask that question, if there were any timelines with it, if that's why we would have to try to speed it up.
And we can get that answer, I think, very shortly. Anybody else? Well, it's kind of unique that when we don't have information sent forward, you get upset. Now, we have all the information, and we're not happy anyway. Mr. Griffith?
Well, no, it's not...
Mr. Weber's going to talk about timelines.
It's not that I don't want the information, Mr. McGinley. I just think that this doc...these documents are very, very large documents. I have...I mean, I haven't had time, and I'm semi-retired. There's people on this council that have full-time jobs. I don't know how they had time to read any of these documents with any kind of clarity to be able to weigh in with a quote-unquote "discussion." I think maybe, once we get it, say it's going to be on the next work session, maybe in two weeks, that would be fine.
We could do that, Mr. Weber.
But you gave us this document on Friday.
We don't have to move it forward. I think I made that clear.
I understand.
And actually, we have three weeks because of the way the calendar falls. But, Mr. Weber, you want to speak to the timeline so everybody's aware?
But I still think it...I'm not finished. I still think it needs to go to committees. It still needs to go to committee, according to our bylaws.
I just agree with you on that. But that's my thoughts. Mr. Weber?
It says all legislations encourage to be introduced for discussion at a committee meeting.
That's initiated by council.
Must be a company by agenda, Smith.
Sorry, Mr. Weber, timelines?
Yeah, Jim, this is Matt Jones, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones. Sorry.
Let me just speak to these two items and their timelines.
Which two?
So, the first item of the three is the proposed rewrite of the Luzerne County zoning ordinance.
Okay.
This is...this is an effort that has been underway for two years on the part of the Luzerne County Planning Commission. The volunteer members sitting on the Luzerne County Planning Commission have spent two years exploring the current zoning ordinance that has served the county well, but have come to find, in their opinion, had some items that they wanted to see updated to bring it forward to be more relevant and useful for the people into the future. So, I don't know if that's technically assuaging your concern about it going to committee, but it has been worked on by the appropriate body, the Planning Commission, for two years. We can provide more detail on that later in the discussion, if you so wish. The other item is the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I wanted to just speak to the timeline of this...the development of this document. There was a months-long public outreach effort that spanned the course of about a year and a half, through which any and all interested parties' input was sought, including mayors, borough councils, township supervisors, fire chiefs, emergency management coordinators, and any members of the public, including county officials and staff, including the EMA Director and other department heads. There was a...there was an open house on June 6th of last year. Dozens upon dozens of municipal officials attended that, as well as members from the That meeting was advertised in advance in the Times Leader. There was several steering committee meetings that were held throughout the several months. There was a...there was another open house held on October 21st of last year, during which there was a morning, an afternoon, and an evening session provided for any interested parties that wanted to follow development of the Hazard Mitigation Plan and provide input. There was also a third open house that was held on May 1st to review the draft plan at the time. That meeting was advertised in advance in the Times Leader. Outreach was made to many of the same parties. There was a citizen outreach questionnaire presented at that meeting. And throughout that months-long process, 67 municipalities within Luzerne County sent representatives to those meetings to participate in the development of the plan. Only nine municipalities in our county declined to participate for whatever reason, whether they were resource-constrained or disinterested, or whatever the reason might be. On May 21st of this year, a last call, so to speak, was put out to those nine municipalities, giving them one last opportunity to participate in the development of the plan as it was moving forward, so that we could try to get them on board. The criticality of this plan is that it, when adopted by the county and municipal governments, enables them to remain eligible for hazard mitigation grants over the next five years. I'll talk a little bit more about the detail on that later, if you wish me to. But there was an exhaustive process of developing this plan for all interested parties to participate in, and it is a hefty document. And the driving concern that we have been...that has been communicated to this department staff over the years is that there is an urgency to have this plan in place. It helps our communities maintain their eligibility for...to be the beneficiary of hazard mitigation grants. And we have been working hard to get this plan to a point where it can be approved and adopted by all of the relevant governing bodies in a form that would be acceptable by FEMA, so that it would be available to be adopted in time, so it would be in place for this old plan as it expires. The point of having it in place as the other expires is that, come November, FEMA and PIMA will begin considering their next round of hazard mitigation grants. We have been communicated a sense of urgency to have this ready for you, so that you would have several weeks to consider this document over the course of two or three meetings, or however many meetings you wish to have, so that you would have an opportunity to adopt it, if you wish, by November, so that we would maintain and lose no eligibility for any of our jurisdictions where they're being able to benefit from these important grants. So, that's just a flavor of the timeline and the opportunity and open opportunity for interested parties to participate in the development of the plan, some of the restrictions we have from FEMA, and the urgency and scrambling on the part of staff to get this to you, so that you would have enough time to consider it over the coming several weeks, if you would wish to adopt it. And I can answer some more questions later, if you wish. Thanks.
Everybody here, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Weber.
I'm here, Mr. Ch...oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
On item number five, the rezoning for the Perry and Wagner properties?
Right.
That has nothing to do with major legislation. That is a standard rezoning, just like the ones that we've considered in the last several months.
Yep.
So, that one should not be held up just because the zoning ordinance and zoning map and the other plans are significant documents. And so, we ought to consider that.
Okay.
If council wants to...to lay moving it forward to the voting session after a hearing and at whatever time, that's fine for the zoning ordinance, but the rezoning, those property owners shouldn't be held hostage to the rez...to their new zoning ordinance adoption.
Okay.
On the zoning ordinance itself, no property owner under the...in the 22 municipalities that are under the county ordinance will have their individual properties rezoned, or the uses that they are currently able to enjoy changed in any way. All that stays the same. Most of the changes are in further clarification and adding standards for things that didn't exist at the last time of the major rewrite. But...and over the years, like Matt said, we've had several meetings with the Planning Commission over the last two years. We had a public meeting this...earlier this month. It was duly advertised as required by the MPC and our current zoning ordinance. We had one inquiry about it from a law firm in Pittsburgh that just likes to keep their tabs on local zoning ordinances, and no other inquiries from the public, and no members of the public came to the Planning Commission public hearing earlier this month.
Okay. Mr. Haas, you're trying to...
Yes, and let me just say one last thing, is that at their last meeting on September 10th...I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Jones, all right? You're speaking?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to add one last point, that both of these major items, that including the zoning ordinance rewrite and the hazard mitigation plan, were also followed, in particular, by the Luzerne County Planning Commission volunteer members. And they voted on their last meeting on September 10th to recommend that council adopt these items at your next opportunity. And Brian Caverly, who is the volunteer chairman of that commission, followed the development of both these items over the last two years very closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Haas, what are you trying to speak for?
Yeah, my question, I believe, to Mr. Jones. So, what is the true deadline for approval of the mitigation plan, hazard mitigation plan? In order to make sure that our communities can take advantage?
Mr. Jones, did you hear his question?
Yes, thank you for your question. It's a great question. So, let me try to answer that in an intelligible way. Effectively, the next batch of hazard mitigation grants might be considered by the Pennsylvania State Emergency Management Agency, PIMA, as early as this November. Some of our communities may end up in the mix as potential beneficiaries of those grants. I'm not aware of any, but I've been asking our folks at this...our friends at the state to provide me a complete list, to make...to see if any of our communities are in there. That is the earliest point when there may be trouble, where our communities could then become ineligible to be beneficiaries, where perhaps a grant that would be, you know, we want to fix a structurally deficient dam, or we want to shore up a levee, or so on and so forth. When that sort of a grant would be considered, and PIMA or FEMA might come to a community in Luzerne County and say, "Well, we would be delighted to consider you for this grant, but you haven't signed on to your county's hazard mitigation plan yet, so you would then need to approve your county's plan, then you would be...then you would remain eligible to benefit from this grant application." The application would be considered valid and approvable, and the monies could be dispersed. So, that is the first moment we would possibly face, where there could be negative consequences, so to speak, of a community or the county council not having yet adopted this plan. So, I'm looking here. We forwarded the plan to you and to the other municipalities at the end of the first week of September. It was processed by the solicitor and the clerk, and it has appeared on your agenda here. And so, this gives you, we hope, the six weeks that you need as a council to adopt this plan, so that it will provide coverage. And this is critically important for two reasons. For...obviously, if the county council declines to approve our own hazard mitigation plan that staff was charged to develop and worked to develop over the past two years with all interested parties, it would call into question the legitimacy of the plan, obviously. The second problem is that there are 28 municipalities in Luzerne County that fall under jurisdiction of the Luzerne County zoning or subdivision ordinances. That is because they have, for whatever reason, declined to adopt and pass their own subdivision or zoning ordinances that would cover their own municipal jurisdiction. So, they fall back on and rely on the county zoning ordinance for land use controls. Because of that item, PIMA and FEMA want those 28 municipalities, if they want to be considered for grants, they want those municipalities to adopt the plan, but they also want county council to adopt the plan, because the county is the land use surveyor, so to speak. The county controls land use for those municipalities, until and unless, at such time, they decide to adopt their own ordinances in the future. So, your consideration and adoption is critically important to maintain their potential eligibility. So, just one last point about the timing, and to answer your question. The last time Luzerne County adopted, drafted, and published a hazard mitigation plan was in 2014. It was not approved by a municipal or county governing body until 2015. So, it did not go into effect until 2015. Its expiration date was two days ago. It was September 20th. Our charge at the staff level was that there was a sense of urgency to get this document drafted, approved by FEMA, and ready to be adopted by the county and municipal governments sometime around September of this year. In particular, our optics deadline was September 19th, because the 2015 Luzerne Hazard Mitigation Plan technically expired two days ago, on September 20th. So, here, we've provided for you in September, the next plan to supersede...to succeed the former plan, and we've provided you several weeks to consider it and adopt it, if you wish, to maintain our community's eligibility for grant benefits, before the next round of grants will be considered by PIMA in November, at the earliest. And so, we have no risk of forfeiting or defaulting on any eligibility if the county municipal governments move in a timely manner, if they decide to move in a timely manner. And six municipal governments have already adopted the plan, and we have verbal commitments from 19 more municipal leaders who have told us that they intend to adopt the plan at their next voting meeting. If you guys have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Yes, I do, Sheila Siedman. I think the issue I have with reviewing them, and I did review them as best I can, because I came up with a couple typos, but is we don't have anything to check the changes that were made. And we don't have any, at least I don't, have any prior documentation. And I would have appreciated if, just like when a contract is changed, or other documents are changed, that they are highlighted, put off to the side, what the change was...what change was made, what language was changed. I think that's...that's almost impossible to do here, because I don't know what...I don't know anything about the prior plan. And that's true on the zoning ordinance, as well as the hazard mitigation plan.
If I may, Mr. Chair? This is Jim Weber again.
Go ahead.
Ms. Seddon, with the zoning ordinance, the existing zoning ordinance, the organization, quite honestly, is very haphazard, if you will, with sections of regulations on things like communication towers, and the article dealing with the zoning hearing board regulations. In other words, how the zoning hearing board is to address things. So, it wasn't organized very well, and part of the mission of the rewrite was to organize it in a way that is consistent with nearly every other zoning ordinance that we've come across. And over the 10 years now, I've been doing zoning at least part-time, if not full-time. I've been a zoning officer in Oster Township, Butler Township, Penningham Borough, Whitehaven Borough, and West Pittston Borough. And our ordinance was organized so radically different that we really couldn't do that kind of a...of a thing, because we totally reorganized it to make it fit more logically in terms of how people look at things, and organize it in a way that is easier for folks to find what they want to address, without having to read through the whole thing to figure out where it was, the old ordinance.
Well, let me ask you something. Even if you had to change the organization of it, I thought you said at the beginning there were some new items, or some items that, you know, they changed zoning...they changed the zoning ordinance.
What we did was, we changed the letter designations for the districts to make them more intuitively connected. So, for instance, instead of B1 for neighborhood business, we changed it to NB. B2, which was community business, is now CB. So, we made changes like that in terms of how the map is organized, but no changes in terms of actual property zoning designations, in terms of their uses. So, nothing like that was ever changed. We added a whole...a bunch of different definitions that didn't exist in the old ordinance to better define things. Part of that was due to the fact that there are uses today that didn't exist when the ordinance was drafted years ago. So, we put definitions in for what those terms mean, and standards for those uses. But as far as adding a lot of things, we didn't add significant things. We did add a new zoning district. We didn't employ it anywhere. We added what's called a mixed residential business, and I...I believe it's fair to say, in most every case, there's very little original author writing, if you will, in zoning ordinances. Nearly every single one borrows the best of everything that's worked before, and as court cases come along, adjusts accordingly. Mixed residential business is an area that we saw a need for dealing with places like what used to be State Route 309, Union Street going through Pringle and Luzerne. It's no longer State Route 309 because it's across valleys, so the intent of directing commu...business activity along that road no longer exists, and it's pretty much an equal mix of residential and business uses along that property. Every single one of those residential property owners, if they want to do anything that we would all normally see anywhere else in the county, like put a swimming pool in the backyard, or put a story shed in the yard, they have to go to the zoning hearing board, because residences... residences are not permitted to use by right in that zoning classification. And so neither are the accessory uses for residential uses. So they have to go to the board, take the time to go through that process, spend the money to go to, to the hearing, and the board's going to grant that use because it's not right to deny a property owner who owns a residence in a district that happens to be business at this point, the right to enjoy the same kinds of things that people literally one block behind them can enjoy just by getting the appropriate permit. But we didn't actually change that district at this point.
Well, let me ask you something. When I was reading it, when was the last one done? Or the last original?
The last major rewrite, the last major rewrite, from what I can tell from the records, was 1984.
Well, let me ask you something. I got to the Ms., and you have medical marijuana growing processing facility, medical marijuana dispensary facility. Were there any of those facilities at that time? Did you?
No.
What, did you add that language?
We added that language because that's now state law.
Well, I know that. That's what I'd like to, that's what I was saying. If you had highlighted that, put new sections because of state law, it would have been easier to, to digest.
Well, we're still on the question of what we want to deal with in the agenda this evening. I think we've had quite a discussion on the zoning and the mitigation plan. I think the hazard mitigation plan, Mr. Jones's information, that's a very necessary one since the existing plan expired two days ago, I think Mr. Jones indicated. And it's already been adopted by several municipalities out there in our county. As far as the ordinance for the zoning, Mr. Weber or Mr. Jones, whoever's has the charge of that, is there some way that you could highlight any new segments that you've added, such as definitions, et cetera, and send that forward, and we can move that to a future meeting?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, we have provided you this two-page agenda submittal with some of the highlights for you. If you would like some more information about definitions and some more discussion.
I think that's, you heard.
To provide members more of a flavor for that, then we would be happy to provide that to you at a future time or in preparation for a future meeting.
Yeah, as soon as possible, so that people would have a chance to review things and have a, a chance to look through it, so that there are other questions that develop from that, they'd have an opportunity to come back and ask those questions.
Absolutely. And if you guys have any pointed questions for us that you would like us to, to look at in particular to help walk you through this, please reach out to my office and contact us directly, and we'll be happy to do that. And we'll put some more thought into it for your next, for your next round.
Okay. So we're. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just had one quick comment, that's all, you know, like.
Go ahead.
When looking at this, like hazard mitigation plan and what, whatnot, I mean, it, it's kind of reprehensible that it's coming to us after it expires. You know, I mean, hopefully in the future, management and people within the county that are working on plans bring this forward to us a lot sooner. You know, understandably, it's been worked on or been, have been worked on for a while now. But, you know, there is a change of council every two years, and maybe we should have been afforded an update at the beginning of the year or some type of notice that this was being worked on previously, not waiting to the last minute as usual to get something and then, in bulk, and then having to make hard decisions on things.
Okay. Do we have agreement that number three, which is the zoning ordinance, would be taken off the agenda at this point? And more information will be forthcoming from the planning zoning office? Is everybody's fine with that?
I mean, I'll say, Mr. Chair, I mean, I have no problem having it on as long as, if there's consensus about either moving it forward or not.
Well, I, I don't plan to move it forward until we have the information that's been requested unless somebody else has some idea on it.
I mean, I, and I'm only saying this because I have had some people very, express their concerns about jumping into rash leaks into approving the plan, but at the same time, I'm also thinking, okay, well, the, one gentleman set a timeline for, to make sure our municipalities will be eligible for grants is, from what I recall, is early November. And then our one's expiring here. So it, it, there is a little bit of sense of urgency here, obviously. And then I'm also looking at, we've got budget season starting up in about three weeks at this point.
October 13th, you are correct, Mr. Hoss.
Lucky, lucky 13. So.
Yes.
You know what? I mean, I don't have a problem leaving all these on the agenda as long as, if there's not consensus to move forward, that we don't do so because we want to make sure we do our due diligence, diligence. And I'm also thinking, you know, perhaps just by talking about it, you know, the media will cover it, and then anybody else out there in the public who didn't get a chance to express their concerns or attend the meetings for whatever reason, would get the time to do it now. So I mean, if we do discuss it, at least it will be put out there in the public. Just my thoughts.
That's fine. I have no problem with that. If everybody's fine with it, that's what we'll do. Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move, Leeann.
Mr. German, do we have a second for Mr. German?
Second. Here he is.
Mr. Hoss.
I was ready for the motion to adjourn. Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
No, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? Okay, none heard. We're moving forward the agenda. Mr. Swets, you have the podium first. Mr. Swets, are you muted?
I was, Mr. Chair. I'm on now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have in front of me the budget reports for August. I'm going to talk about some of the high-level items and as always, answer what I could, and whenever I don't, I'll gladly respond in emails. One of the items that was brought up at the last meeting was the transfer of the $210,000 that council approved. That was done, it was done in September, so that's why you won't see it in the August report. I know some people get it in the world more than others, so just so everyone is aware it was done, you'll actually see it in the next report because of the timing of us actually doing it after it was voted on in September, so that's why it's not in your August report. One of our big items that always gets talked about is the tax collection, so I'm going to briefly talk about that. To date, as of yesterday, county collected $111.6 million. That's 97.4% of our budget. I believe everyone realizes that our budget is 92% of the total, so that's about 89.6% of the total. To get to our budgeted number at this point, we'd need a little less than $3 million. And last year in December, we collected $3.7 million. I said to council at the previous meeting that once all the reports came in in September for August, that have a good idea of where we are. So I do think there's a good chance it will be on or very close to our budget number for taxes, and I just wanted to report on that. One of the other things that we always talk about is some of the percentages. 84% of revenue, again, with all that has been going on, not just in the county but worldwide, 84% at this juncture. Budget and finance, besides working with division heads on preparation for the October 13 budget, has also been pulling out items for any kind of COVID funding. It's, you're well aware, because you've approved them, there's multiple sources of COVID grants, and we've been working on getting that information together and preparing it for the state. So working on the budget, looking at the taxes, working at the day-to-day, working on cash flow and our investments. So that's really the high-level report. I do have the detailed report in front of me if anyone has any questions, and I'll leave it at that.
Questions for Mr. Swets.
I have a question for Mr. Swets.
Go ahead.
Mr. Swets, when I look at COVID-19 account, 59950, there's transfers going on with journal entries, there is no supporting documentation on. How do we get that supporting documentation?
Sure.
Particularly, particularly in $191,000 in Bureau of Elections was a journal entry, and I don't see, some of the other departments do put their receipts out, but there is no supporting documentation in that department anywhere.
Sure, I'll make sure that they're on there. The $191,000, as we talked about in the past, is primarily the overtime. As you know, if people were reassigned from a job duty, so not the Elections Department themselves, because that's out of their own budget, but if staff from another department was assigned to Elections, any of the printing, any of the styluses, any of the one-time costs that were associated with the pandemic were pulled out of lines like other contractual services and put in the COVID line. I'm not sure why the detail's not on there, and it is for other things, so I'd have to look into that and could definitely get it posted. But we, that is one of the things that we're working on to get together for DCD, for our reporting of the multiple grants. I think, as you're aware, there's grants for the human service agencies and grants for the county, so it's not just the one CARES grant, there's been multiple grants for COVID. But I'll make sure that that gets posted up there, but I know for Elections, it was some of the one-times, if you recall, we had the styluses, we had pens, we had sanitizer, and then we had other departments put time in that is not in their normal job description that is all eligible to come up to that total. But I'm not really sure why that's not posted there, so.
Yeah, and that, that was one of the concerns that myself and Mr. Urban raised when we were talking about transparency on these COVID expenses, is that I see in the same department, 614 Amazon is the transaction description, $439.42, no supporting documentation as to what that's for. That's just two of, two of many that I see in, in COVID, in that COVID account, that there's absolutely no supporting documentation for. And $191,000, there should be some kind of list of what was qualified for COVID that put that in that expense account. And, I mean, I, I mean, if it was styluses and pens, then it must be charged to another account somewhere. Unfortunately, I don't, there's no way for the county council to see where that transaction happened, especially for, when it says, basically, the description is to move administrative division COVID charges to the correct account. What's the correct account? I don't know.
Sure, we, I, I understand your concern, and we can put together a summary. As I, you know, I stated, some of these were charged to, you know, starts and we buy supplies, office supplies, get charged for cleaning supplies, which we never bought before, like sanitizer, and as the CARES money comes in and some of these other grants comes in, we have to move with them, but there definitely should be a document. So we can put something together that covers all that and make sure we have the supporting documentation for all of council.
Okay. Yeah, there are some items that are over, over budget by, you know, like mileage reimbursement on a couple accounts. There's some over expenditures on other contractual supplies or services. There's some overages that may have to go through the COVID, but like I see holiday pay, you know, I see a lot of things that are going on that are, we're out buying dinners for people, you know, in, you know, people that are working at the Bureau of Elections are getting dinners and stuff, and I just, I just don't understand why that stuff is not documented in, in the paperwork. So if you could get that information, that would be helpful.
Sure, I can put it together. And, and again, and we can put together a report. I think we had talked about, we had those PowerPoint reports earlier in the year, before we even received any of that CARES money, that talked about the styluses and some of those things. But we can definitely put something together. And also, I think some of those are cleared up with budget transfers and things in September. Again, a lot, not that there's nothing to be done, but a lot of work was done in September and will continue to be done, you know, to clean up the budget and to have these reports ready to go, so we can move forward on budget and getting COVID reimbursement.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead.
It's Lynda. Mr. Swets, I would just say that this is probably the shortest list of account payable invoices that I've ever seen. I wonder if there was a page missing, but I don't think there was.
No, that, no, there wasn't. It's, it's obviously hit or miss. You've seen them before. There's times where we have, you know, 12, 15 pages, and times we have one or two. I think even one or two times we've had, you know, two vendors. It really depends on the timing of the invoices. If we have the cash available and we can pay a vendor, we certainly do.
Right, well, you do have a couple that are there that were due June 30th. I'm just wondering if we're holding on to those for some reason, but I understand they may have been paid by now anyway.
I, I think, I think they were, and as you're well aware, we have some of the staff onsite and some remote, so, and it's, and it's, the vendors are the same way, obviously. So there's times that I may get something that was from July, but we just received it in an email three weeks ago, because they weren't in their office for a couple months.
Right, okay, thanks. I just wanted to say, I think it's very commendable. We have very few outstanding invoices.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions for Mr. Swets? Okay, moving down to number two. Discussion regarding an ordinance designating processing and/or disposal of facilities, providing the waste flow control requirements to direct municipal waste, the designated processing and/or disposal facilities, and providing penalties for violations of this ordinance. Who's going to speak to this ordinance, please? Who is going to speak for this ordinance?
I'm going to defer to Eddie O'Neill or Melva on this one.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill?
Okay, yes, Mr. McGinley, I'm here. I'm sorry, I was having trouble getting, getting my, my, my phone unneeded. This is an ordinance that dictates flow control for the county, for Luzerne County and all the refuse, the solid waste collected within the municipalities of the county. We are currently working on our 10-year solid waste management plan update, along with our hazard mitigation plan update. And one of the items that is incorporated into that plan is a flow control ordinance that is adopted by the county in order to assure our participating landfills that waste will be directed to those facilities. It includes a, includes a registration by all haulers within the county, and they would come into the office, register as, as haulers. And there are also fines associated with refuse that would be taken elsewhere outside of those, of those five participating landfills.
And what's the time requirement for this, Mr. O'Neill?
We are working on, the, the plan is in its draft phase. There are several periods of review that we are in the middle of. It will be with council for, I believe, 60 to 90 days in the upcoming months, so this is just a portion of, a part of that plan. There is no extreme urgency in doing this immediately, but we wanted to get this taken care of as a formality, so that when the plan comes before council, it will have been taken care of at that point.
Okay. Questions for Mr. O'Neill?
One question here. Anything with electronic waste at all?
That's, that's a separate, that's, that, that is, there are portions of our, our draft plan that deal with, with every form of solid waste. I can try and provide sections if you have a specific concern about electronics from the plan, and I can provide that to council.
I mean, one of the biggest things is it's trying to get rid of like TVs, computers, things like that.
If I may, excuse me, Eddie, if I may, this is Beth Donardi, the county recycling coordinator, to address, to address the issue of the electronics. We have listed in the county plan the electronics program that we offer to the towns that many of them have taken advantage of. There is still no ruling from the state yet as to, if there are any changes to the electronics rules, regulations, and laws. We know that televisions are a big issue, and again, we have addressed it in the next 10-year county plan.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay. Other questions?
I just wanted to follow up too. I know I mentioned in the past, I think there was Lancaster County that could dispose that kind of stuff. Has anybody looked at their model?
When you say Lancaster County, are you talking about the landfill?
I'm talking about like electronic waste.
And exactly, I'm not quite sure what type of electronics collection they have there. Do they have a drop-off? Do they own their landfill? Do they have it at the drop-off?
They have a drop-off for all their county residents, I think, as far as. I think they have an actual authority or some type of board commission that oversees it. I mean, it's just something to maybe research, possibly.
Check with Lancaster County and see what their process is. We would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Anyone else with questions?
Please know, though, that there is a difference between an authority and a county office.
Yeah.
Okay?
I think most people recognize that. But if there is something that would be helpful for us, maybe we can look at that and see what they do.
Most certainly.
We can investigate that matter and report back to council.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll move down to number three. We've had a lot of discussion already about the zoning ordinance, but is there any other questions for Mr. Jones or Mr. Weber?
I have some, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Austin.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, I have three questions brought up from different people. And the first one is, how much of this plan was based on Agenda 21, the international code?
Mr. Jones?
Could you repeat that question, please?
Sure. How much of the proposal was based or taken out of the Agenda 21, the International Sustainability Planning Code? Was that a factor in developing our five-year plan?
That's the hazard mitigation plan you're talking about.
On the planning code.
We're talking about the zoning right now, Ms. Austin. Then we'll get to the mitigation plan. Is that what you're, we're talking about zoning? Is that part of zoning? I'm not sure.
Zoning, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, zoning, that's what we're talking about, yes. Somebody said planning. I don't know where that came from.
No, that probably came from me. It's Plan Zone Department, but the zoning, the zoning code.
Mr. Jones or Mr. Weber?
I don't believe that the zoning rewrite had any particular thought put to that item that you described, the Agenda 21 sustainability code. Jim, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think that the plan particularly addressed that, the rewrite of the zoning code that we're proposing. Is that correct?
No, it did not. We did include things such as development in environmentally sensitive areas, like steep slope areas, areas dealing with watersheds, and included standards for requiring riparian buffers and other things to deal with erosion, sedimentation, and other, if you will, environmentally sensitive issues. But no, we did not look at that specifically.
And that makes me recall that there are some updated information, there is some updated information presented in the plan about adherence to federal floodplain regulations as they've evolved. And also, we're, in this rewrite, we're proposing to accommodate certain land uses that were not anticipated in the 1980s or were not yet on the scene, like the potential development of solar panels and wind energy turbines.
That is correct.
But to answer your question directly, we did not look at that particular criteria.
Okay, that's extremely helpful.
Yeah, you said you had some other questions, Ms. Austin?
Yeah, yeah, I do. But you know, gentlemen, thanks for bringing up the sedimentation mitigation as well. Obviously, you've been following, it's very unpopular here with a lot of folks with the federal mandates we have, the stormwater fees and the rain tax. I was just wondering too, that if the sanitary authority was able to weigh in, I'm just assuming they did, as a stakeholder in this. And if so, if that would satisfy some of those mandates that we could in turn, you know, get a reduction for our people here. I don't know if you can weigh in on that. I kind of asked three questions there in one.
Which is the stakeholder?
I snuck him in there, Mr. Chair. You know me. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I know. Okay, Mr. Austin.
Three for one.
Go ahead.
Okay.
If I may, this is.
Who's speaking?
Go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Weber, please, you got the floor.
Mr. Austin, the sanitary authority did not weigh in on anything. Of the 22 municipalities, the zoning ordinance applies to the ones that are, that deal with the sanitary authority that we have are all basically urban municipalities along the valley. Municipalities like Avoca, Durie, and so on. The areas that, and most of those areas are pretty well fully developed, so there's very little environmentally sensitive area there to address. The municipalities that have those kinds of situations, like Hunlock, Union Township, Cunningham Township, Newport Township, a good portion of them that were the environmentally sensitive areas in terms of sedimentation and erosion and so on are not served by the WVSA anyway. And those property owners, to the best of my knowledge, really haven't been affected by that so-called rain tax.
Okay, yeah. Other questions?
Yeah, okay, that's very helpful too. And I have two more here as well. I'm looking kind of on the same guidelines. They're development, construction. I'm looking at page 5-21 and specifically section 534.2. Let me get up here as well. So again, knowing that a lot of communities had representatives come and share information with the crafting of the plan, my concern is new development does not fall in the back of the municipalities. You know, we've seen in years past, you know, they would create infrastructure there and then let the municipality leave them with maintaining the roads and doing the upkeep and making improvements and things like that. That it seems like it's covered here, but again, I'm just the amateur here looking at the great work you all have done. So does the plan fully address that? That it puts the onus on the developer as opposed to the taxpayer once they sell the property and move on?
Excuse me just a second, sir. Are you referring to the planned residential development section?
Yes.
To be honest with you, that language, that entire section is straight out of our existing ordinance.
Okay, so no changes on that?
No changes on that.
Okay.
The only thing we did was organize the format a little bit so it's a little easier to follow the section because the current ordinance didn't have any kind of natural dividers between the different sections. So we just, we added the index numbers, if you will, just to make it logically flow. But the wording is exactly the same as what we have.
Okay, so all right, no change on that. That's helpful to know that as well.
My last one, Mr. Chair, if I may. We got, a few years ago, best one for last. We had a lot of public comments about having backyard chickens. And I'm waiting for Mr. Swet to make some chicken noises out there. Props to you, Brian. But people have brought this up, and I'm looking at the section. It's section 502 agricultural uses, section C. And it currently states that there's a minimum of five acres for poultry with at least a minimum of 100 feet away from, it says a lot line. I'm guessing that's the property line. And I just want to know, was that existing as well from five years ago? Or has that changed? Or was there anybody, and again, I'm asking my three questions in one. Was there anybody that also came forward to suggest any changes in that? Because I still do quite a few questions from that, from time to time.
The standards there are a little bit different. We tried to add some standards for the properties that are in the agriculturally zoned districts. The question about backyard chickens in particular was in residential districts. And to address that in the definitions under domestic or domesticated animals, we made it specifically clear that domesticated animals do not include poultry of any type or other exotic animals, pigs, and so on. And that the domesticated animals, there's a limit of what you're going to have in residential districts in terms of the number of animals and the definition of what is a domestic animal.
And Jim, just to clarify. Jim, it's correct that the ordinance would allow for chickens as an agricultural use and in the agricultural zone, but not as a use within a residential zone for the 22 municipalities covered by the Luzerne County zoning ordinance. Isn't that correct?
That's basically correct. There is one slight change there in the current ordinance and still in the proposed ordinance in the suburban residential district, most all of which are out in rural townships. Those lots, because they're larger and further apart from neighbors, do allow for limited agricultural uses. So poultry could be, you know, so having chickens in the backyard out there could be permitted. But that's the only place in a residential district. The single-family, two-family, and apartment residence districts do not allow anything other than domestic animals as defined in this new ordinance.
Okay, and that's very helpful. So to clarify then, again, suburbs, even though they're not zoned agricultural, but because they meet the requirements of bigger property sizes farther away from boundary lines, that they do allow chickens.
That's true in our current ordinance, and that'd be true in a new one.
Okay, so again, my question is, the last one is, did anybody bring this up during the different hearings?
No.
That this was still an issue. Okay. All right.
Mr. Austin, we haven't heard any input on that front, except to say that on occasion, we will have we will have a property owner in a residential district. They will move forward with attempting to have chickens in their backyards when it isn't permitted. And we are sometimes compelled, we might get a call from a local mayor, for example, and we're compelled to require the homeowner to cease and desist obtaining chickens for their backyard or take down a coop if it's in the wrong, if it's in a zone where that's not an allowable use.
Questions for Mr. Weber?
Yeah, this is Linda, Mr. McGinley. Mr. Jones, the question about backyard chickens, we've talked about it off and on, mostly off for the last couple of years, but for about eight years, we've had it on the, you know, in the back of our minds. But just to be clear about that, there would not be a change at this point with this zoning ordinance, right? There would not be a change to the current status of backyard chickens.
That's correct, right, Jim?
Thank you.
Ms. Austin, that is correct. And in fact, the ordinance is stronger in terms of defining what constitutes domesticated animal that would be allowed in our one, our single, two-family, or resident apartment zone.
Great, okay, thank you.
Other questions? I think Mr. Jones and Mr. Weber, you have some other work to do with that zoning information, correct, from our earlier discussions?
Yes, I just have information I could provide you tonight, or I could provide more later. I did want to tell Mr. Austin that I found your question about getting credits for stormwater mitigation and, in effect, reducing nutrient pollution for the Chesapeake Bay. I understand that the rain tax has been unpopular in some corners of the county and what's perceived as a rain tax. Your question about maybe earning credits through our affecting zoning regulation of stormwater in the county is interesting to me. And I will check with DEP to see if there is anything to that. I know that Councilman Griffiths and McGinley have been participating in a series of webinars with DEP to discuss possible voluntary programming that we might be able to pursue. But the idea of maybe gaining credits for work that we're already doing is intriguing, and I will check on that for you.
Yeah, thanks. It just seems like we just want it to work and we want to burn off the taxpayers' property owners. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have one question.
Who's that?
This is Jim Weber again.
Okay, Mr. Weber, go ahead.
In terms of identifying changes, what format would be acceptable to council? Would changing the font in that section to red?
Yeah, some way to highlight or change the color, I think, would be probably the easiest thing for council members to recognize.
I mean, just recognize that because the ordinance, the formatting of the ordinance is so different, a large part of it is going to be in red, even though the basic content may not have changed. That's the only challenge, is to try to figure out a way to.
I think maybe possibly put a comment in the margin that would help to identify that, if that's possible.
You should talk to Linda Howke after the meeting. Just kind of go with that kind of thing.
Okay, whatever, whoever, we'll continue to work on that and we'll see if we can come up with a format that makes things easier for people. Going down to number four, the hazard mitigation plan. Again, we've had a lot of discussion. Who would like to speak to that?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, this is Matt again.
Yep.
Yes, this is Matt Jones. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I've presented much of the information I intended to present to you tonight already in your earlier discussion. Let me just hit a few highlights again for this. There is a sense of urgency for us to adopt this in a timely manner. The planning commission members voted on their September 10 meeting to recommend council adopt the hazard mitigation plan as the official plan for Luzerne County. And again, there was this months-long public outreach effort that included.
Mr. Jones, we've lost your audio. Mr. Jones? I don't know what happened to Mr. Jones. I think we had a lot of discussion on that. If there's other questions, please forward those questions and we'll make sure we get some answers. I think the major thing was the fact that we have a very strong deadline here that we're now a couple days past to get this plan in place. Move down to number five in the interim. Mr. Weber?
Yes, the rezoning that is in front of you. Three property owners, Richard Perry, Randy Perry, his brother, and their aunt, Adele Wagner, own four parcels of land along Croxell Switch Road in Lake Township. All, three of those properties are zoned A1 agriculture. The fourth one is zoned B3 highway business. The B3 zone, at the time the ordinance and map were adopted back in the 1960s, housed a auto repair shop. It was not a gas station or anything other than just auto repairs. And one of the buildings on that property and the house that the property owner at that time had, that property owner passed away. The service garage has been shut down for years and years and years. Mr. Perry, who owns the property right next door, Richard Perry, that is, bought that property. that property. And he and his brother and his aunt would like to rezone all four properties from A1 and B3 respectively to R1 single-family. All four properties in the Tax Assessment Code are, uh, assessed as w- one-family residence use properties. All four of the properties are not sufficient in size to, uh, be classified as a working farm, uh, and none of them have, if you will, any, uh, what would be considered arable land for farming, even if they wanted to. So the four, uh, properties, uh, the three owners in the, once the zone, their four properties are one, so that it matches the, uh, actual use of the land that's there today. Uh, and then, um, Richard Perry, who owns the property that is also currently zoned B3, would then plan to, um, do a subdivision, combine that property with his existing property, and then split it up into three separate properties that meet the requirements of the R1 zoning district, and, uh, convert the old service building, which is in good shape, but just not set up to, to be, uh, used today as a residence unit, convert that to a dwelling unit, and create two, uh, rental properties next to his existing residence. So that, that's the intent of the process. Uh, the Pla- Planning Commission reviewed the, uh, application, uh, several weeks ago, had a public hearing. There were, was no opposition to, from any neighbors, uh, no comment from any, anybody from the public, uh, regarding that application. Our office, uh, views the, uh, application as, uh, consistent with the, um, land use plan, um, that currently exists for the county, and it's, um, uh, consistent with prior zoning practice in terms of, uh, uh, of, um, zoning, uh, zoning law and established precedent. So our office, uh, also recommended to, uh, the Planning Commission that it be approved. Planning Commission recommended that, uh, it be forwarded to, uh, council for approval as well. And that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Weber?
Hi, folks. This is Matt Jones. I'm sorry, my, I lost my connection. I'm back in now.
Okay. We went on to number five, uh, Mr. Jones. In the interim, Mr. Weber was available, so we talked about the rezoning of the four properties there, or Mr. Weber talked about, I should say. So questions for Mr. Weber? If not, we'll be moving ahead with that. You had it, did you have any further information in regards to mitigation plans, Mr. Jones?
Uh, I just wanted to, I hope, uh, I don't get a feedback loop. I just wanted to relay the sense of urgency that, uh, we got this plan on schedule, on time, uh, wanted to present this to you folks, to have weeks to digest it and look it over and, uh, put it in front of you for your adoption consideration. Um, you have several weeks to look at it, and if you have questions, I would urge you to please call us, and, um, we're open and available to help, uh, to help you digest some of this information and what it all means. The sense that our communities remain eligible for these hazard mitigation grants is, uh, something that our department has held important, and we wanted to get this, uh, in a timely way in, in front of you. Uh, the last plan just expired, and so having this new one in place will be helpful by that November timeline when the state and federal governments, uh, look to begin considering new grant rounds in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Here's nothing on number, who's that?
Mr. Chair. Harry Huss.
Go ahead.
One last question. I mean, I'm, I, I wasn't able to read it word for word. I, I might be the first one to admit that. It was not, not the most pleasurable reading, but nonetheless, um, you know, a couple more pages to read over would be great. But, um, that, that being said, with, it seems like it's mostly a narrative, the, the hazard plan. And, I mean, at the, at our level, i- is it across the Commonwealth, do you, do you see actually at this, at this stage, are people really making amendments to change the mitigation plan? I mean, all the stakeholders and, and the folks there are the true experts, and it seems like they've already weighed into this. What, um, what do you foresee council actions in the future, if any?
Did that go through?
Yes, uh.
Clearly, but Mr. Jones.
Yeah. I, I suppose the, the best I could respond to that is that it's a thought piece, and it is something of a narrative. We are trying to describe the various hazards that we might face in the county. Um, in particular, we all know and think about the flooding risk here, uh, when it rains. But, um, you know, uh, monitoring our dams to make sure that they are structurally sound, um, you know, keeping on tap, on top of the various possible, uh, risks that we might face and, and having this plan in place so that if we do face trouble, that we have a narrative available to us on how we might respond as a community. And that gives FEMA and PIMA the confidence to give us money. Uh, it gives them the confidence that if they give us money, that we'll have some idea what to do with it.
Mm-hmm. Sounds all right. Okay. No, it's very, very, very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I believe we're at number six. Discussion regarding resolution requesting Luzerne County Controller conduct an investigation into the policy and procedures Luzerne County Correctional Facility regarding the death of Shaheen Mackey at the Luzerne County Correctional Facility. Mr. Griffith, uh, you wanted this information presented?
Uh, yes, and it's pretty self-explanatory what I'm looking for. Uh, the charter does clearly give the controller the power to do that. Um, the ability to put the $30,000, uh, funding in there is due to the charter saying that if she needs money that's not allocated in her budget, that, you know, to, in order to perf- to perform that duty, uh, she obviously has, her budget been, pretty well, has been, for lack of a better term, uh, scaled back. She doesn't have a whole lot of money in her budget, so I don't feel that she would have the financial ability to do that, uh, outside consultant if she wanted to do it that way, or if she wanted to hire somebody to help her along as a consultant. So, um, that's why the resolution allocates funding for that. Um, I don't know what else anybody else wants to ask, but I would encourage that to be put on the agenda so we can find out, uh, where the shortcomings are, uh, what, what actually may or may not have happened there, where we can strengthen our, our ability to make sure it doesn't happen again. Uh, obviously, the, uh, investigation that was put on the agenda last week was for the criminal side. I want to look at the policy and procedure side. I, I want the controller to take a look at that and see, on the intake side, was there a problem when they did the intake of that particular inmate, and did they follow the procedure properly? Um, there's a lot of things that we see in the video that raises questions for laypeople, myself included, to say, is that part of our policy? As to, that's how you conduct that type of, uh, uh, that's how we handle that type of inmate? Uh, is that, you know, is that our policy and procedure? If it is, maybe we need to fix that policy and procedure, or we need to strengthen it or something. But so, I think we need to have some independent set of eyes look at that. As I said numerous times at these meetings, the controller is an elected official of the people. She's independent. It says she is the independent watchdog of the county. When I sat on the study commission, one of the questions and problems that we had was, we took the power of the payable away from the controller because the controller was supposed to be the watchdog. And I can never get the vision of the dog with no teeth in his mouth from Vito De Luca when we had that slide program, was the controller has no ability to do anything. Well, the controller does have the ability to do something here, and she can do an investigation. We can request it. We can't demand it. The charter doesn't allow us. But we can certainly request it, just like we did with the, uh, district attorney. If she doesn't want to do that, that's fine. She's accountable to the people of the county. That's up to her. She could do whatever way she wants to handle that. But when, when they had issues with Food Gate and I was the controller, I investigated that. When we had issues with other problems at the jail, I investigated them as the controller. I don't see any reason why we cannot get the controller to at least consider looking into this matter.
Questions for Mr. Griffith or comments?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Kendra.
Okay, Kendra, first.
Um, yeah, no, I was just gonna ask, um, which, um, would she be reviewing the policy and procedure at the time of the incident, or the policy and procedure now? Because changes have been made since then, so I just wanted some clarification on that.
Well, I would say she should be looking at the policy and procedure that was at the time when that incident happened. If there's been changes made, she needs to know what those changes were. And if they were changes for the better, that's obviously something she could put in her report, that, you know, these are deficiencies that weren't rectified. That's certainly something that, you know, would be beneficial to county, uh, council as well as to the, to the general public to know that they actually recognized there was a problem and they fixed it. Yes, I, I, I think she should look at what happened at the time when it happened.
Um, this is Leanne.
Someone else was trying to speak? Who was that?
Leanne.
Go ahead.
Um, so some, I guess I have a question about the wording. Uh, you do have, conduct an investigation, and I believe, wouldn't that just be a review or inquiry, because an investigation would be used for a criminal? Um, so that's a little, I guess, confusing to me. Um, also, that's not in her expertise to do. Um, something like a prison audit, financial, you know, for the financial part of it, commissary and work release. Um, I think she would have to reach out to somebody, uh, someone else, like an expert, to get that done. I know you did a lot, $30,000, but obviously, $30,000 was not enough for the law firm that Mr., um, Pedry was trying to, you know, uh, get to do, to do an investigation, or again, a review. Um, looking at what I think is reviewing something that happened in 2018, what, what are we going to get out of that? We have made changes. The prison has made changes. So I'm not really sure looking at 2018 is worth spending $30,000 on.
Anyone else with questions or comments?
What, what changes did they make? Do you know what they are, uh, Ms. McDermott?
I do not have the list.
So that's the, that's the question that, um, I'm trying to get the controller to look at is, if they did make changes, that's great. That's, and I, I certainly agree that if they made changes, that's a good thing. But there obviously was something that needed to be changed in 2018, or they wouldn't have made changes. What changes did they make?
Why are we going to spend $30,000 on, again, just, okay, that, this was what happened, these are the changes that have been made? I think that's a lot of money to spend on just trying to compare, um, again, when we moved in the right direction. Again, you know, what the state came back with their review of the prison was, was good. So we are moving in the right direction. I just think $30,000 is a lot of money to spend on a review, something that has certainly changed.
But we don't know if she followed, if the, the jail followed the procedure that's outlined in the prison, when they had their review done by the prison entitled 37, uh, section 95. We don't know if they followed that. That's the, that's the question. Is, is there, is there a procedure that they follow in, in whether, when they tase a, an inmate? Is there a procedure that they follow? Is how many times you can do that when he's restrained? Is there a procedure in, in take process when they do intake on an inmate? Is there a procedure that they did not follow? That, those are the questions that are, are concerns. CPR technique, is there a procedure on how they do that? Supervision, is there a procedure on that? I mean, we all saw the video.
I have to say that they're definitely, they're definitely, yes. I mean, there has to be.
Well, then they didn't follow it.
So obviously, wanting to see it in, in writing is something that certainly can be requested. I don't think $30,000 is, is, uh, a wise, you know, expense, you know, to find that out. And I don't know why, why all of a sudden are you putting this on the controller to do?
Well, because we tried to get the DA to do it, and she said no. We tried to get the, uh, council to do it, and we were told we can't. And so, when, when clearly we can. There is no oversight on the executive branch at this point in the county. There is absolutely no oversight.
Nobody said that. Nobody said that we couldn't do anything. It's just nobody, nobody made the motion to, to, um...
No, no, the motion wasn't made to allow the manager to do a review of his own. That was the, that was the motion that failed. We were told that we could not do a, an investigation as county council. That's what we were told.
Yeah.
And clearly, we can, but we were told we couldn't as a county council committee.
I guess, I guess I, I'm thinking if, if you're not getting the right answer and you just keep trying in different ways to get the answer that you want, there may not be the answer that you are looking for.
No, I'm not trying to get an answer that I want, Ms. McDermott. I'm trying to get an answer as to what happened. That's what I'm trying to find out. I'm not trying to figure out any specific answer. If everything was done properly, that's fine, but we need to know that, because there is no.
We believe we've already gotten those answers. The DA, the FBI, they've all come back with their, with their answers.
Yes, on the criminal side, not on the procedural side.
Well, uh, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley. Didn't we get a, um, the Bureau of Prisons did their, their review, and it came out fine? I mean, Walter, do you know the answers to any of those? Do you already have those questions formed? I mean, do you think you're the person that should do the investigation? I think we, I think that, I actually thought the matter was completed, was finished. It, and I, I agree with Leanne. You know, it's, we're talking about a 2018 matter. There's been changes, I believe. To go back and review it and re- I'd rather wait for something to come up new, unfortunately. I hope nothing does.
Maybe we'll have another, maybe we'll have another death. Maybe that'll work.
No, 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 Walter, we did have another death. The other thing is, no, that's not what I said. I said, but policies and procedures that are current are what really needs to be looked at.
And who's gonna look at that?
Well, I would hope that the, that Mark would and review them. I mean, who looks at any of our, and we don't get outside reviewers for, for any of these issues?
The state does the review. They, they have it done either annually or every two years.
And if you look at the review from the state, they, they make sure that you have certain policies and procedures in place. That's what the review of the state does. I've seen the review. I've been a part of the review. All they want to make sure that you have policy and procedure in place. They don't, it doesn't necessarily mean you're following it. It's in place.
When were you part of the review? Just out of curiosity.
When I was in the controller's office.
And again, that was what, what year was that?
2010.
Okay, so that's a little, you know, dated.
It, yes, it is, but the, the bottom, the question here is, oh, you know, I, I, I just, I don't understand. I mean, we all saw, we all saw the video. We all saw what happened. I don't have to say much more. And, and I'm just not gonna say anymore, because it's silly. If, if nobody wants to find out what actually happened here, then that's fine. That's fine. I like, I would like to know as a policy and procedure. That's what I would like to know. Criminally, no. Do I, and I've said this before, do I think that something criminal happened there? Probably not. Do I think somebody was remiss in following policy and procedure? Yeah, I think they was, based on what I saw. Now, that's based on what I saw. I would like to see an investigation by somebody to say whether it was or it wasn't. And if, if it wasn't, what did we fix? Did we fix it? Great. If we didn't fix it, then we better fix it before we have another problem. I'm not, I'm not wanting to spend another $3 million for lawsuit because we aren't following policy and procedure. But that's, you know, that's, that's my, if they don't want to do that, that's fine. I don't have a problem with it. I just think it's important.
Any other people who would like to speak to that?
Yeah, I've been here.
Go ahead.
So i- it's one thing to have policies and procedures written down, and it's another thing to execute them. And, and obviously, you know, the, the, the policies and procedures had to have failed on that given day. And, and I think, you know, where Walter's coming from i- is basically to, to ensure that the execution of those policies and procedures don't fail in the future. And, and we want to know if any adjustments have been made. You know, it's, it's, it's not to litigate this matter in public over and over and over. It's, it's just to ensure that things have changed, so hopefully, in the future, things are prevented, that we don't incur any more deaths or unnecessary deaths in the jail, um, and, and have to pay out lawsuits. You know, I mean, it, it seems like some of you, I mean, just don't believe that council has any oversight over management. And, 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 and I find that, you know, like I said, reprehensible, because it, it's our job as elected officials to, to have oversight of the executive. to, to have oversight of the executive branch of government. But you, 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 some of you just seem to give free rein to this county manager and management in general, that you take their word, that they're going to do everything that they say they're going to do. And then later on down the road, we find out that it's not always the case. And, and, you know, that's, that's the problem that some of us, I think, have, and the challenges that we see in this county. Um, that things aren't always fol, I mean, we look good on paper, just like the charter, is not always executed in the best manner. What, what, what starts off as great intentions, ends up not working in reality. And, and that's what I think some of you failed to see. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what more we can say about that, but, you know, sometimes things are written down, yeah, we get good grades on, on what's written down in, in books and policies and procedures and manuals. But when, when it's all executed, at the end of the day, we failed. We failed the public, we failed the individuals that we housed there, you know, and, and then we end up paying for it fiscally. So I, I don't know what, what some of you are arguing about sometimes, you know? It's just, we want some oversight, and we have that ability as council.
Anyone else who has a comment?
Mr. McGinley, if no one else, I have, Steve, we have done that. When there were the three suicides in the women's area, we became very, and we were very, very concerned about it. And put to, and dropped the company in that was handling that, questioned them, were not happy with the way they responded, and put together a team of experts in that area to put the mental health policies and procedures together. I mean, I, I think it's unfair for you to say that there are people on here, uh, that don't take their legislative ability seriously. I think we all take it seriously, we just may have a different approach than you do.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I just wanna follow up with that and just say, you know, like, most of these investigations are done internally. They're not, and, and, and it, the people that are, should be the experts are the professionals that actually work for the county. And, and we always seem to have to go outside of this county to hire experts for everything. There's an expert for this, an expert for that. I mean, why do we have higher, high-paid professionals within the county? If all the time we have to go and hire consultants, or we have to go out and hire outside people outside of this county? Don't we have enough talent within the county and bright enough intelligent individuals that can ask pointed questions within our own su, you know, in our own realm? I mean, we have people on council that know how to ans, ask questions. You're an attorney too, you know, Ms. Sageman, and, and you should be able to ask questions. You should be able to have an, an investigation. I mean, you have the credentials to do it.
Yes, I do.
And you choose not to, though.
It's not an investigation, it's, it's Leanne said.
Inquiry, investigation, whatever semantics you wanna use, okay? The fact is, is we have the ability to do it, but most of you block it all the time, because you protect the manager and management. That's, that's the case in point, that's how the public sees it. I'm sorry, I have to call it.
All right, all right.
Public, not all of the public.
Yes, that's, okay, I think we've had a lot of discussion on that. Thank you. Uh, we had one addition, uh, Mr. Haas had asked a discussion about having, uh, public sessions again. Mr. Haas, you wanna start that?
Mr. McGinley, before we move on to that, did Mr., can we get an answer from Mr. Pedry if he has a, uh, answers to what happened to the, the young lady that passed away at the jail recently? We haven't seen anything about that. Can you give an answer?
I, yeah, I haven't seen anything, I, um, Mr. Pedry's, Mr. Rakovich on, or somebody could respond?
I know.
Mr. Rakovich, you want us?
Uh, if I may, if I may, the, the, uh, investigation is not completed yet, uh, by the district attorney's office. Uh, uh, and, you know, she, uh, will keep us updated when it is.
Okay.
Are those folks still on administrative leave?
Uh, Ms. Crocomal, is that a?
I don't know.
You know, it's a, i- it's a personnel issue, uh, uh, if, if Mr. Rakovich, uh, is on, uh, I, 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 I would suggest that, uh, we discuss that, uh, if it is going to be discussed, uh, in executive session.
Okay.
Mr. Pedry announced that they were put on executive leave, I just wanna know if they still were.
Well, I think you heard the answer from Ms. Crocomal. I think Mr. Doolick was trying to get on, I saw his picture there, were you, Mr. Doolick, or you have a comment or something?
No, I, I agree, I agree with Attorney, uh, Crocomal, I, it's not appropriate to discuss in public.
So we can't say that they're on administrative leave or not? We don't know who they are, but we can't say that.
It's not appropriate to discuss a personnel matter in public.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving down to number, uh, it became number seven, Mr. Haas, you wanna begin that?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, just real briefly, I'd, I'd like to see us get back to, um, normalcy around here, get back to meeting in public, and public, um, needs that. I think it's, it's more healthy for us as well. And I understand that there are some people who are, are likely to do so, and this is, um, not a mandate whatsoever. So I just feel that if people wanna get together on the council, in, in person, with all the appropriate measures as outlined by, by the governor's office, you know, I think that's fine, and if you want us to, I think that's fine as well. Um, with budget season coming up, you know, it's, it's gonna be difficult to do this, uh, over, over the internet and over, um, our, our Zoom meetings here. So, I just wanna take the temperature of council. Again, I think we could do a both and, Mr. Chair, I think some people can meet in public, and if you would like to stay home, do it remotely, I think that's a wonderful thing too.
Well, uh, just sort of a, a little bit of an update. I've spoken to Mr. DeMaro several weeks, maybe a month or two back, asking about some, uh, technology, uh, equipment, some software equipment that will allow for, uh, meeting situations. I spoke with him this morning, uh, that the equipment is scheduled to be in shortly, and the software is scheduled to be in shortly. Uh, he anticipates that probably towards the latter end of next month, October, uh, that's, it'll be installed, which means it'll be available then, and, uh, obviously, we'll have to test some of the, the features to see how everything works correctly, some, similar to what we did back in March when we began with these, uh, teams meetings. So there is some movement there to provide an opportunity to maybe have a, some kind of session that would be more of a public session, versus a fully remote session that we're currently, uh, working on. So that's sort of an update. Any other comments from people?
Uh, yes, I, I think we should, I mean, we just had the election machines demonstration in the rotunda. Uh, we've had, we've had planning and zoning meetings in the council meeting rooms. We've had, uh, the, well, the Bureau of Elections is supposed to meet there tomorrow, or next Wednesday, right?
I don't know.
Well, it's on the, it's on their agenda that they are, so I, I, I just don't understand.
You may be right, I don't know, I just, I don't.
I don't understand why we cannot meet in, in the, uh, uh, in the council meeting room and safe distance.
It only has fourteen people when you do the.
And the administration could wait out in the hall.
I'm not talking about, I'm just telling you about, we only can have a maximum fourteen people if we have the six-foot social distancing.
Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila. There's, there came a new statement out by the physicians and scientists that because it's so highly transmissible by air, actually, six feet is probably not enough.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that, but.
Came out yesterday.
Okay.
Well, I was in the rotunda watching the machines being demonstrated, and there was no six-feet distancing in some of them. They were pretty close, but we had masks on, I have, I will say that, so we were protected to some degree. But I just think that, uh, you know, I, you know, I, I personally don't have a problem meeting virtually, I just think it's a, it's a detriment to some people in the public to actually see us working in public, so, um, I mean, it doesn't matter to me either way, quite honestly.
We're making strides to, to try to improve things, and I hope that, uh, as we get some of this new technology and new software, et cetera, we're able to offer more features and provide more, uh, interaction.
And I, and I think whether we're inside or not, I think the council needs to get, uh, as we saw how much paper we probably have been saving over the past, since March, that, I think, I think what we need to do is council needs to get laptops from the agencies that are gonna tra, throw their laptops away, so that Sharon can send emails with the, with the documents in them, and that'll eliminate all that printing and all that throwing paper. We would have had a document this time of probably five hundred and some pages each.
They're over six hundred pages.
Yeah, of, of eleven members of council. So I think we've, we've, just by the COVID, uh, experience, we've demonstrated that we could figure out some way to save a bunch of money just in paper and time for Sharon alone. That's a monumental task for the clerk.
Yeah, it is a monumental task, but I don't think it saves her a great deal of time, because she's been working hard on it.
Yeah, but at least she doesn't have to copy it and staple it and all that, so, and collate it.
Yeah, we have to copy it and does the collating and the stapling, so, but it, it's a lot of work.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, with all due respect for budget time, I'm gonna need my wheelbarrow worth of paper, I'm gonna need it.
Uh, we will provide whatever you wish to request.
But truly, if, if, if we could really consider that again.
We'll, we'll fill it up with paper for you.
Right, right on the mark, but I, I would leave you with Mr. Chair, though, honestly, you know, all seriousness. You know, I, I think it's, what I'm suggesting is very reasonable, we can do a both and, and if people are, are hesitant to come in pu, in, together in person, I understand. But I, I still think if, if you'd like to meet in the flesh, I think that, uh, I, I think that would help out greatly on, on a couple different fronts. And, um, if we could start doing that maybe in a month's time, by budget time, that'd be helpful.
I'm hopeful that we'll have some kind of better situation, that we can make better accommodations.
Mr. McGinley, I sent an email to you about the budget, uh, upcoming budget sessions that are coming up.
Well, let's talk about that when we get to the committees, okay? Which is the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
All right? And yes, I think you sent it to everybody, Walter, am I correct?
Yes, I always send my emails to everybody.
Yeah, that's right, fine, thank you. Going over to the committees, uh, Mr. Voe, do you have any report for March thirteenth?
Yeah, finalizing, finalizing a meeting for October sixth.
October sixth, thank you. ABC's Mr. Perry.
Uh, yes, we have a meeting on Thursday, uh, the twenty-fourth, six o'clock. We have six agenda items, and we have, at this point, this morning, we had fifteen interviews. I suspect we'll be in the twenties before Thursday rolls around.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Perry. Uh, Mr. Perry, I, I saw in the paper today that Barry Finn passed away, and, uh, we probably should keep him in our thoughts and prayers when we adjourn our meeting tonight. I saw on, he was the chairman of the Children and Youth Advisory Board, and I saw that in the paper today. So I don't know if any member of council saw that. I think, Chris, did you see it, Chris?
I didn't see that, no, thank you.
Yeah, it was in, it was in the paper this morning, and I'm in.
I didn't, uh, read the obituary.
Yeah, I did, and it said that he was the chairman of the CNY.
He was.
Yep, so let's.
He resigned recently.
Yep.
Maybe, maybe because of his health.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted everybody to know that, so we keep them in our thoughts when we adjourn, if you would.
Truly noted. Uh, budget finance and audit, of course, we have, uh, chosen the auditor now, so we'll be meeting with the auditor, set up the schedule and get all the paperwork and things in place, and then, uh, set up with the committee. Uh, I will communicate with the auditor as they report. Mr. Haas?
You got the report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. McDermott, real estate?
We have a meeting set for next Tuesday, September twenty-ninth, at one o'clock, that will be done virtually.
Okay, um, Ms. How?
Uh, nothing on strategic initiatives, uh, we're kind of waiting for something to be sent our way. Uh, there may be some prospective things there, but, uh, code review, uh, we have a meeting for next Tuesday at four o'clock, the twenty-ninth.
Yep.
And that will be virtual.
Thank you. Uh, down to number nine, blighted properties, Mr. Haas?
They have a full board, the chair, nothing to report this time.
Okay. Oh, the county cares?
Yep, meeting September thirtieth at six P M.
September thirty?
Yes.
Riverfront Parks, I have not received anything, I did receive the communication, uh, that I sent out to council that had, they had a picnic by the river the weekend after, uh, Labor Day. I sent a couple articles in the paper, seemed to be very nice, very positive articles. No other information, and Plains Township tip, there has been no information or meetings. Uh, public comment?
Are we gonna talk about my question on the email?
Go ahead, Mr. Uh.
Okay, so, so my concern, and, and I know some members of council have been on this budget process before, and how painstakingly it is, I've sat in the audience year after year. As a member of council, what I would like to see is, in my email, and I don't know how, as the chair, you would facilitate that, or we can make that happen, but I think it's more, more ea, well, I shouldn't say more easy, it's easier for us as council members if we make changes to the budget, that we vote on them as quickly as possible, so they stay fresh in our minds, rather to wait till December, and do a whole host of them all at once. I think if we have a department in and we go through their budget at a work session, or a budget work session, the very next meeting, we, we should be the same week, do a voting session and vote for those changes, and just vote on those items only, not make it a full-blown agenda, but make it a voting session for budget items only, so that as we make changes, we can solidify them, get them ratified and put into the new document right away. It's less work for everybody in December, and it, and it makes it more cohesive when we're trying to decide on changes that are made and, and how they're gonna be implemented. So it would be helpful for me as a council member to be able to vote on any amendments to the budget as we make them, rather than do them collectively in December, as was the procedure in the past.
Anyone would like to comment? The only thing I would say is we have a meeting every other week, and if there's changes that you would like to add to the agenda, uh, when we meet on Tuesday evenings, we certainly would add those to the agenda. I think it's important that you get a entire look at the whole budget, uh, so you understand the process and the coordination between the budget before we go ahead and make some individual changes that might have different ramifications throughout the budget. But we certainly can add anything to any agenda when we meet on Tuesday. Okay, public comment, please?
Hi, hi, this is Jason Carr from Salersburg, Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McGinley, uh, I, I didn't, uh, plan on speaking tonight, but, uh, Mr. Urban struck a nerve with me after listening to him, and, uh, I just want, uh, everyone to understand that the problems that you have inside Loserun County don't really happen, uh, at least in Monreal County where I live. Uh, the things that are discussed and the things that are practiced and the decisions that are made, uh, in Loserun County are contrary to both the taxpayer and, you know, the citizens, uh, which are in, not in their best interest. For instance, in two thousand and sixteen, everyone knows that, uh, the manager, David Pedry, obviously, was not the best qualified candidate to lead Loserun County at the time. There were three council people that did vote for him at the time, which was Mr. Haas, Mr. McGinnley, and Mr. Sheen. Um, the, looking at it, uh, what experience did David have? And to understand why we're going through all these problems right now, did, David did not have any municipal experience managing a county, let alone a county of three hundred thousand people. He never managed a budget, which is approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars a year, and I don't think he had any experience managing employees, which he now has to manage fifteen hundred employees. I guess what I'm saying is, uh, instead of fighting with Mr. Pedry, why don't you try to help him? Because he obviously, back in two thousand and sixteen, was not prepared for the job. We all know, being in Loserun County, why he was hired. But in the future, what you should do, instead of fighting with him, is try to help him, because he is still struggling to manage a county. David has, from looking at his resume on LinkedIn, he, he had limited life experiences. And I would say that he's never worked in the private sector, he's never owned his own business, and going back to it before two thousand and sixteen, never managed, uh, a municipality, and had very. and had very hmm, average results working for the county. From what I've seen, work, uh, being at county meetings for the last 18 months, probably the number one issue that there is in the county is that David hires and going to Mr. Urban's point, David hires people that have no experience. For instance, at the last election board meeting, I asked the election bureau director what her qualifications were and she could not tell me. And I believe a deputy director has just been hired and he has no experience. And I believe this, this afternoon, you have the FBI investigating the bureau. So obviously David needs help. Mister, and I, uh, Chairman McGinley, I would ask you to have a, a discussion with Mr. Griffith to work more closely with manager Pedri and help him develop as a manager. As well, I would tell you that the things that I've seen, intent, Mr. Pedri has intentionally charged residents a higher assessed value, uh, higher assessed taxes on properties purchased out of the repository, contrary to state law. He, he's given property, he's given break, he's given a tax break to a developer who was convicted of felony against the people of Luzerne County. And like lastly, the manager uses penalties from delinquent taxes as a form of revenue to balance the budget. Now, an experienced manager would not do those things.
Please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is my time over?
Yes.
Sure, so, and lastly, the one person who was currently on council at the time the decision was made to hire Mr. Pedri, who did not vote for Mr. Pedri, was Ms. Houck. So that shows the wisdom that Ms. Houck had four years ago, not wanting to have Mr. Pedri as the manager. Because as we continue to see over the last four years,
Thank you.
the problems haven't stopped, thank you so much.
Okay, other members of the public, please?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Rayvo.
Go ahead, Mr. Rayvo.
Yes, um, I heard the entire discussion with regards to the hazard mitigation plan and the zoning ordinance, and I appreciate Mr. Jones, although I haven't had the distinct pleasure of, uh, meeting him. Um, I would like to ask if the invitation to, uh, provide input for this hazard mitigation plan extends to the public? Because I would like to, uh, chime in and because of the six, and I can appreciate, uh, the deadline, uh, for this, uh, plan. And if, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you can recall in the 2014 plan, when it was adopted in 2015, that was under the deadline, that was also on a deadline, uh, very close to the deadline that had to be voted upon. At that time, it was rushed. Uh, yes, in 2000, well, 2014, it was, uh, you know, uh, crafted and then it, and then it was adopted at the, towards, I believe, the end of 2014. And then it was, uh, adopted in 2015 by Pima and FEMA. So, uh, this is no different, uh, for this update, uh, for 2020. So, uh, I would hope that, uh, Mr. Jones would provide, um, you know, the information to you guys and also members of the public and they, they have the, uh, opportunity to, uh, provide input. Because some of this plan, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, has some very, uh, inad, like, uh, under, under, uh, under, um, informed parts here, uh, like with this COVID, for example. I think we learned a lot from the COVID experience over this past year. And there were points where, if you remember, Mr. Chairman, and I brought this up at numerous meetings, where people from New York and New Jersey were, were coming in droves to the Hazelton area to shack up with their families when the virus outbreak happened, and we all know New York City was the epicenter of the COVID crisis. And, uh, that's how Hazelton became ground zero of COVID. So I think that should be in this, uh, hazard mitigation plan because New York, uh, was, uh, basically allowed their infected population to, uh, affect Luzerne County, uh, that's just one example. And also, Mr. Chairman, uh, for, uh, the chair, vice chairman for the ABC Committee, I would ask, um, if he would ask, uh, put on the agenda for the meeting upcoming for the ABC Committee for the bylaws and for, uh, other, uh, information in terms of the statutes that regulate the authorities to be put on the county website. I know, Mr. Chairman, when you were, uh, ABC chairman, uh, and Ms. Houck was, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Houck was ABC, ABC chairperson, uh, there was discussion on the bylaws and the statutes that regulate the authorities to be put on the county website, which never happened. So I, I believe that that needs to be happened so that way future board members would know what's expected of them. That's, that's, I hope, uh, Mr. Chairman, that you convey that to the vice chairman for his upcoming meeting.
I think Mr. Perry heard you. Thank you.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and stay safe, everybody, uh, I'll, and I hope to see you, uh, next week or next two weeks.
Public, other members of the public? Other members of the public? There are none?
I missed one, just quick.
Reformed us, excuse me?
I, I just had one quick item when you get a chance.
Well, now's your chance, Mr. Perry.
Um, I'm still waiting for answers to my election questions, I forwarded those over, over, you know, two weeks ago. Uh, I don't know now because there's an investigation if I'll ever get my questions answered.
No, uh, uh, Councilman Urban, I sent those to the chair and Sharon to distribute, but I, I can send them directly to, uh, you or.
I'm sorry, if I didn't send them out, I thought, I thought we did, but.
It was Thursday, I sent them last Thursday.
Okay, last Thursday?
Last Thursday.
And I'll see them.
And Attorney Crocomal, I'm still waiting for an answer on, uh, this Thursday, I have an MHD fire free board meeting?
Yes, uh, Shannon is working on it and you'll have, you'll have something tomorrow.
Okay.
Absolutely, it's on, it's on the radar.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, if, if I'm remiss there, I'll, I'll, um, make sure I check that, I'm sorry if I messed that up.
Mr. McGinley, yeah, it's Walter.
Yes.
Um, I, I asked in an email of Mr. Pedri for the number of applicants that applied for the director's job as well as the deputy director's job. I wanted a number and I have not received that, so I will go on the record now and ask it in person. I want to co-, I want to know how many people applied for the deputy director job and how many people applied for the deputy director job?
Walter, that's actually in my email, um, I've been, I've, I was tied today, uh, but I got my email, I'll send it to you first and tomorrow. I have that and that spreadsheet thing you were looking for as well.
Oh, very good, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, in light of, uh, the information that Mr. Griffith provided a little bit earlier, uh, we would, uh, accept the motion for adjournment and recognize, um, Mr. Finn for his service of the county and, uh, obviously wish his family well in fact that Mr. Finn has, uh, passed away at this point. So I request a motion in that regard.
Don't move, Kendra.
And Ms. Radell?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Uh, in the opposition, the extension is nonturned, uh, please stay safe. Looks like the weather's going to be changing a little bit, so stay safe. And on October 13th, which is our next, next scheduled meeting, Mr. Pedri as the manager will be introducing the draft budget for 2021. Uh, so that will be a lot of information that'll be provided in that evening. And hopefully, uh, we'll get that out so that we can start that process. And then after that, we, we will be dealing with meetings, dealing with budget. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
It's Linda, I was just wondering, uh, do we have an idea when PFM is coming in?
PFM?
Yeah, don't we usually have PFM come in when we're starting the budget process?
Uh, I don't have an idea, but I'll ask that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know we do have the risk manager coming in to talk about the insurances later in October.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.